Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. It's an exciting night. This is the first select board meeting we're having in the new interim town hall. And it's exciting, I hope it's the first amendment. It's come a long way since we first looked at it. But welcome, and we're happy to be here. This is the select board meeting of Monday, August 7th, 2017, at 7:00 P.M. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? We'll do this flag right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. The town hall will have an open house on Wednesday, August 16th, from 4:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M. And you're all welcome to come and see the great job that Jennifer Callahan has done in getting this thing organized along with the help of Les Davis and Jeremy Finn. And a lot of- lots of work.
Blackstone Valley Tech.
Blackstone Valley Tech, especially the- the other labor. So, we look forward to seeing you all here on Wednesday at four, between 4:00 and 6:00 P.M.
It's causing reverberation.
The next item on the agenda is Mass Works Central Street Project. There'll be a public forum on Monday, August 21st, from 6:00 P.M. to 8:00 P.M. at the Senior Center. And this is basically to come in and the plan is for the Central Street is progress to the 100 percent point at this time. And we're inviting individuals to come in with questions and the like. And Jen, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
It contained in your packets an actual flyer that will go out to all the residents on Central Street. This will differ a little bit from the last one, which was really an informational forum. This is meant to be one in which residents can come and talk specifically about their properties and actually learn the aspect that's going to apply to their property based on the overall construction. So, they'll be able to say, "This is exactly what we're planning to do in front of your house. This is what we're also asking for, the input of what you'd like to try to see as much as possible to be able to work it into the plans." So, from 6:00 to 8:00, it's really a walk-in and an ability to actually have a good interaction. We wanted something where people didn't feel that it was, they were just talked to. And, you know, so there will be discussions with individuals about rights away and also about what is actually going to take place right in front of their own homes. So, it's a good time, you know, to be able to come in and do that one-on-one. So, I expect that a lot of the residents that showed up the last time, they'll welcome that.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting of June 19th, 2017, and July 10th, 2017, and the signing of the June 5th, 2017 meeting, corrected meeting minutes. So, we'll start with the minute meeting of June 19th. I'll answer to a question.
Can I just say something?
Yep.
On the announcements, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't have a say, but Mrs. Slazek's first name is Philamina. It's written as Phil instead of Phyllis. They called her Phyllis, but her full first name was Philamina.
Okay.
So, if we could just fix that.
Sure.
Is that it?
That's just one thing I think.
So, motion to sign, approve and sign, June 19th, 2017 minutes.
I hear a second.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 abstain.
abstain.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve and sign the like 10th, 2017 minutes.
Questions?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye, three ayes. And the corrected minutes of June 5th. I'll entertain a motion to sign them tonight.
I think we already, we already approved them. We just have to sign them. We approved the changes.
And I won't be signing because I was absent at that meeting.
Okay.
At this point, have we heard from Lincoln Barber?
No, I did put in a text to him, but we have the other appointments that we could proceed with. And I put him second on the agenda, so the first one would be accepting the zoning board resignation of Lincoln Barber.
Okay.
And voting to appoint a member, associate member, to the zoning board.
I got live, though. Yeah.
We've received a letter from-
It's not broadcasting live, though.
Lincoln Barber.
Online, okay.
Resigning from the zoning board of appeals. Lincoln may be taking on further responsibilities with the power. And so, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation from the ZBA of Lincoln Barber.
So moved. And I'd like to thank him for all his work he's done on the ZBA. Look forward to working with him as our new building inspector.
I second that.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the resignation of the building commissioner.
Do we want to appoint Joanne?
Oh, okay, we can do that.
For the ZBA, so Joanne has offered to step from, she was the associate member, correct?
Right.
Yes, she's looking to be.
And so, she'll be, so that's good, because, you know, she'll have knowledge of everything that's going on. So, I make a motion to appoint Joanne Melby of 19 Townland Drive as a member of the ZBA.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have next the resignation of Larry Lynch, as building commissioner. However, he's available on a part-time basis on a call, as an on-call inspector.
Substitute inspector.
So, you know, Mr. Chairman, that this has been something that's been discussed between what will hopefully be the incoming building commissioner, who will be able to actually devote much more time to the position. And as you know, that's been one of the things that we've really needed with our enforcement division, is to have someone who is being able to be called upon at a moment's notice. So, they are looking to work together for the transition, so I think that's good. And also, it'll be a good person to be able to rely on for historical knowledge relative to cases. And I think that's important for our incoming commissioner as well. So, I recommend that he come on as a part-time inspector.
Here a motion to accept their resignation with the offer to participate as a substitute inspector.
So, I move to accept the resignation of Larry Lynch as building commissioner and to appoint as a part-time building inspector.
Second. Rule.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The next piece on the agenda is a letter to the Board of Selectmen regarding the appointment of a part-time police officer, Philip Frasen. He's an officer, he's worked with experience. He's a resident of Mendon. And he's been, he's graduated from the part-time police academy.
I don't know if the chief has anything else you would like to add to this particular-
Short on Phil Frasen, many people are aware of Phil. He was a part-time on-call fireman for a time over, for many years. He worked in Hull for a couple of seasons. He worked for Millville now as an examiner's police officer. So, I think he's a good fit. We did pass the psychological and physical examinations that he sent him through at his own expense. So, he's currently in, right now, ride-alongs to learn a job a little more efficient than before. He's, you know, appointed, once appointed, tonight he'll go into the FTO program. And I think he'll do fairly well for the town.
It's full-time.
Finding qualified, part-time.
But, no, but, you said FTO.
FTO program, yeah, field training officer program. You know, finding good qualified candidates is getting more difficult to do. There's a shortage throughout the area of both full-time and part-time police officers. So, I'm glad to have him. I think he's going to do fine. That's about it.
Thank you. I'll hear a motion to-
Hold on.
Is this a new position that he's filling?
No, the way the department operates, we have part-time police officers. There's no limit as to how many we can have or should have. We should realistically have seven to eight part-time officers. Because we're not full-time employees, we're part-time on-call as needed. So, we really need a good pool of applicants and qualified part-time officers to work. Especially this year, we increased the budget for the part-time line officers, so we need more. So, I intend to find maybe two more. Like I said, mostly the cost is at their own expense, first year, so it costs us nothing. So, if they don't perform, they don't do well, we simply released.
We did have a vacancy as well.
We did.
Yeah.
At one time, we had nine part-time officers. We're down to five. This will make six. And I hope to put on maybe one or two more.
And we don't, and we have more two officer duty shifts because of our mutual aid agreements and having to staff our own town.
That's correct.
Not as a second.
And that was certainly brought to the attention of myself last couple of years, where other towns, they'll certainly supply and provide mutual aid, but they're not going to supplement the Millville Police Department. If we don't have a sufficient amount of people to handle routine calls, they're not willing to come here or anywhere else, because that's not the definition of mutual aid by contract. So, we have the responsibility and liability to staff our own police department rather than relying on other communities to do our work. And that's why the budget was increased, to bring those additional shifts to the department.
And if I'm correct, by having a large amount of part-timers saves the town a lot of money in overtime.
Absolutely. Part-time is, they're restricted how many hours they can work per week. Very seldom do they receive overtime. They receive a flat rate, so it's around $16 per hour. And they work maybe 19 to 32 hours a week if needed, but we try to keep those hours under 19. But during vacations and holidays, sometimes we use them more often. But they certainly reduce the need for more full-timers because they're occupying those shifts. It's just finding good ones, because you spend a lot of time and money training them, finding them, training them, and then we make them so good. They're attractive to other departments and they get hired through our training program. So, if ever one we keep, we lose probably two. This is what it is.
Thank you. So, I'll hear a motion to, you can stay right there.
Oh, I can't, okay.
You can stay right there. I'll hear a motion to appoint Philip Frasen, Franzin, as a part-time police officer at Millville.
So moved.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 The next item on the agenda is resignation, oh, the retirement, resignation, retirement of Karen Furno as an on-call EMT for 27 years. Karen's letter to town indicated that she was retiring from her position. She served for 27 years. And she indicated that the time has come for her to retire and indicated that her last shift will be on 7/26/2017. We thank her for 20 years, 27 years of service. But she also goes on in her letter to indicate a number of other issues that she's concerned with the EMT service. And I was wondering if the chief would like to address any of that or indicate-
Sure. Her resignation letter addresses wages and the problem we have attracting new EMTs into this town. Like part-time police officers, EMTs are getting very, very, they're very hard to find, they're very hard to keep. Millville, unfortunately, such as being such a small town, we have a very small pool to find in-town people to work as EMTs. So, we have to rely on out-of-town EMTs to supplement the two full-timers that we have or any other in-town EMTs. Problem that we have is we pay very, very little. We pay $75 per shift. A shift is roughly 13 hours. So, you break that down, it's probably $4.20 per hour. And because they live outside of town when they work, they're required to stay in the fire station so they can respond to calls. So, finding somebody outside Millville to work for such a small wage is becoming a very, very difficult problem. We currently only have five on-call EMTs from outside the community. We should have nine to 10. We've lost four or five in the last year due to various reasons. Not so much money, but some have found other jobs that pay more, some found full-time jobs, and some simply don't want to work for what we pay. And the last budget, I tried to increase it to what I thought was correct, but that was somewhat denied and given back to me. And that's one of the reasons why we're having a hard time finding on-call people. But the problem is greater than that. If we don't have people to respond, we don't have an EMT service. And we're at the lowest number I've seen since I've been in town for 11 years. And if it continues, you know, I don't have an answer for it. Because right now, we're relying on the town of Uxbridge to supply a lot of our backup and to respond to calls. So, we have advertised on websites, town bulletin boards, and looking for people to work in the town of Millville. And unfortunately, there's very little interest in town. People who live in town have no interest. So, I have to rely on out-of-towns. And that's where the financial issue comes up. Are they willing to work for less? And the answer is no. But we're not alone. I spoke to another department on Friday. They're down to six on-call people as well. There's a shortage of EMTs everywhere. Private companies as well. One recently shut down because they couldn't find people to work. So, EMTs are similar to part-time police officers. The interest is simply not there right now.
Is part of it due to the paramedic training that the state is-
No, right now, I mean, we're still licensed under a basic.
Right.
And they're still going to allow that to happen.
So, but is more communities going to the advance? Is there less need?
Well, we are the only department in the area who offer a basic service. Everyone else is at a paramedic level, which I believe this town should be at, a paramedic license level. But unfortunately, we don't have the people. But we don't, more importantly, we don't have the runs. We only average maybe 200 calls per service per year. So, what that does is it limits us from asking a private company to come in town and to provide service like Grafton does. Grafton privatized their service, so they won't come here because there's no money to be made. We don't mandate, or we don't have enough runs to mandate a paramedic service, because you have to have so many runs to qualify for a paramedic service. So, in a nutshell, currently and for the future, we will not qualify for paramedic service, nor can we afford paramedic service. That's a whole different license. Most of those paramedics are working for larger departments, making a lot more money than we can afford to pay. So, if it continues, you'll probably see me before you're looking for help and answers for the future of the EMT program in town. We cannot survive with five EMTs. It's just impossible to do that. We need two per night. We need two different shifts on the weekends. So, we only have two full-time firemen, and they can only work so much. So, at the end of the day, we're relying on mutual aid far too often. And for two different reasons. One, not filling the schedule. And more importantly, a lot of the calls we're receiving now are ALS, advanced life support, not basic. So, if we go to a call for a, say, any type of serious illness or injury, we're automatically calling ALS. We're calling, you know, Uxbridge Primary Department, we call, then Mendon, and then periodically Blackstone. But they're just as busy on occasion. So, that is the biggest challenge we have for public safety, is the EMS program in town. I, you know, I don't have an answer for it right now. We're going to advertise again. We thought of some new ideas today to raise the rate for on-call people coming into the station. We're going to try that starting tomorrow. I think I have in the budget-
The pay rate?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up the pay rate, a rate for people who have to come into town and stay in the station. We're going to make some significant changes. So, hopefully, that's going to attract them. If it doesn't, we'll have to do an evaluation maybe in six months to see where we are. Because at the end of the day, we just can't survive with five or six people. We just can't do it. And we, it's going to, we can't rely on Uxbridge or Blackstone or Mendon to carry the calls. So, we're going to have a difficult decision to make if we cannot attract people.
How do we compare with the other towns financially?
No, that's very difficult to answer, because every town has a unique system. Like Blackstone, they rely on mostly full-timers.
Right.
Mendon does as well. Uxbridge does as well. We, we're opposite. We rely on on-call. So, we're unique.
Just throwing it out there, I totally understand what you're saying.
Same thing on the police side. We are probably the last department in the valley to use part-time police officers. I don't think there's any other departments in the valley that are using part-time police officers to service calls. And there's a lot of reasons for that. We can debate that some other day. Liability and training is one of them. That's why we try to really stay on top of training for the part-timers. So, that's another, another problem. But going back to EMTs, it's very difficult to attract them and keep them. We just lost another one last week because she took a full-time job with another fire department, full-time. You can't blame them.
No.
They're leaving the town of Millville, part-time on-call, making very little money. And then she accepted a job that pays $70,000. So, that's not our loss, because we're doing things the wrong way. It's just the money. So, at the end of the day, we're going to try increasing the funds and see what happens.
And I, I believe that there's strength in numbers. And numbers being the, your residents who live in town, who serve, to come out to the FENCOM meeting, to come out to the selectman meeting, to come out to town meeting, to advocate for those things and with you, you know, as the department head. And I think that, and then the other piece of numbers is those hard numbers of the other communities and rates of pay and where we're standing and what we need. You know, I think we, I think those numbers across the board in representation and in information is vital. Because if not, it's just like, well, oh, it sounds like, oh, they want to raise. When it's like, no, if we don't, we're going to lose a service that is very-
But it's one of the few services we have left.
And it's one of the most important services.
I'll be frank, when I prepared the FY '18 budget, there was a good amount in there to raise it, to attract more people. That was cut, and I understand that. But then I look at the revenue side of it, and I look at the ambulance receipts. It's too bad we couldn't create maybe an enterprise fund, maybe to fund that. But you know how that works with the ambulance receipts. And that's been taken apart over the last five years and dismantled, so the money goes back into the general fund. We could talk about that all day long.
That has been a hot topic for 20 years, Chief.
Yeah, that money is not going back, that money is not going back to the fire department or the ambulance service who created it. So, we're actually, when we take money away like that, we're doing a disservice to the EMS program, because we need more money for that program to succeed, and we simply don't have it.
As an administrator, I have to say that I'm not aware of any other local EMS program that pays $5.77 an hour. Not for the what we expect. And as you heard, if you're one of those 200 people who need a service, and EMS is all about, you know, the response time. And it also is about the skill set as well. So, the reason why I wanted the chief also to come and talk about it, because this is another clear example about what we need to do in this town for rightsizing our budget and resetting our tax rate. Because I do believe that most residents think that we have a full-service EMS department that really, you know, has, has, you know, a continual stream of very well-qualified people who want to stay here and actually get compensated in what we think is an appropriate level. But that clearly isn't. And after 27 years, I think it's phenomenal that Ms. Furno has served the town like that. But I also think it's no different than our highway department, our police department, that we're needing to bring it into the 21st century. It's not about this board's lack of support for it, but it is about the broader community, as our vice chairman woman has indicated, of understanding what's really at stake and why we really are looking at things in a different way. Because we can't sustain it going forward without having those things. And if people think they're getting it, they're never going to understand-
And I agree. I think, I, you know, I talk to a lot of new, especially new parents that move into town, because my children are the same age. And you're talking, and they'll be like, "What do you mean? There's only like one or two cops on duty?" I'm like, "Oh, yeah," you know? I think the research into what the town is and, you know, "Oh, you don't have this service in town? Like, I thought you had this." Or, "What do you mean, there's no fire department on at night?" You know? It surprises many, and it surprises me that they, they don't know that about the community in which they purchased a very largely-priced home. But that's what happens. And it's eye-opening that, wow, you don't fund this. Or, you know, "What do you mean, your town hall is closed on Fridays and at 1:00?" And it's like, yep, you know? And, and it's hard for some people who are new to the community to understand that we work on a very basic level because of our budget, our town budget.
Many have no idea about the public safety issues that we have in town. They come into town thinking, you know, we have two or three officers on every night. That's not the case. We have, you know, more than one or two paramedics and our paramedic EMTs work, and that's not the case. So, we really do need a change in the funding. You know, in my opinion, we spoke about it before, the ambulance receipts, in my opinion, is not a revenue source for this town. That money should go back into the EMS program to make it better so we can service the needs of the people in town. Unfortunately, that money goes everywhere but to that service, in my opinion, politely. And that's where it should go. If we had that boost of income, we could bring the levels up to where they should be. But you realize at the meeting four, five years ago, when it was a change of direction for the ambulance receipts.
It's been a, and I can see Lincoln smiling in the back, but it has been, you know, it was 100% back to the fire.
Correct.
Back to fire. And then it became back to public safety, and then it became 50%. You know, so, I mean, that's been a slow-
Sure.
Yeah, I remember sitting around with the-
I don't even think it's 50/50 anymore. I check my numbers, and I don't even think it's a 50/50 split anymore. I think when the town unfortunately needs money, I get it, but that's the first place to look at.
That with the assesses overlay, the receipt, the ambulance receipts, those other places that are in excess, that are by law, that we are able to access.
And on the public note, the ambulance will need to be replaced in three to four years. Currently, that ambulance is $250,000 to replace. Think on the capital, we may have 30. If I do the math, pretty good math, we should have enough money put away in the last five years to pay for that ambulance, and we don't. We don't even have close to that amount of money to buy that ambulance. And on another note, off the topic for one second, talk about expenses on the fire department. Engine 2, I learned today, has a cracked frame, which is going to be a substantial amount of money to repair. That's the older vehicle that we have on Attaquin, engine 2. So, that frame is cracked, on the exit Friday during the service. So, that's just simply another example of we need money in public safety to make these things run. That vehicle is old as well, it's a 2003- That vehicle is old as well. It's a two thousand and three, I believe. So time's ticking. So this, in parting, the capital line on is very important to, to fire, to fund these things correctly, so you have the money to buy the ambulance, uh, in a couple of years. You know, the old stretcher that you see people, Joe, you replace on a stretcher at one time in your life? Now those are all hydraulic. You can't use the old type of stretcher anymore. They're forty thousand dollars. And it's mandatory when you replace the ambulance. So that, s- just throwing that out there.
That's overpriced, huh?
Just throwing that out there, so that expenditure's gonna be around maybe two fifty, two seventy-five in a couple of years. So we have to look at ways to stop funding that if, if the ambulance receipts goes in the direction it currently goes in. And that's all.
Can we keep this, I know you're gonna do your homework, but you'll keep this us involved on the topic as we go forward?
We had a meeting today with a couple of people. We've got this new idea we're gonna start. It's gonna, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight, where I have twenty people coming to the door, but I think over time, it will attract people over the next six months to give us a good amount of people working on the ambulance. And I think it should correct itself with the infusion of some capital. So, that's it.
Okay, we, we, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
We, um, need to vote here. Did we vote?
No, we did not.
No.
No. So, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now, I do commend, uh, Ms. Furno for that, because, you know, most people submit letters of resignation saying thank you to the community and they leave. She simply identified a problem that we do have. So let's, I'd like to commend her for that.
Mr. Barber? We have a letter here from Mr. Barber to the Le- the Board of Selectmen. He would like to be appointed Building Commissioner for the Town of Millville. Due to a recent resignation of our current commissioner, he felt that it was, uh, as acting assistant inspector, that he is prepared to take on the role of Building Commissioner. Would you like to address the board?
I was at Home Depot when I got the text that said, I'm supposed to be at this meeting tonight, so I apologize for my appearance, but, um... I don't know, what would you like to hear? I've invested a lot in myself over the last three years to get certified by the state for this level. Presumably, it happened on the second, but I haven't received a written notice of it yet. And I'd like the job, if you wanna give it to me.
Very thankful that you wanna take the job.
Yeah, well, we'll find out how happy I am with the choice a few months from now.
I, I just, I just wanna say that, um, when Lincoln has come in previously and interviewed, uh, there was no, there was no question about your commitment or loyalty, or, but, you know, able to carry out. And I think it came down to the licenses when the votes came. And so when I saw this on the docket over the weekend, I was very happy because I think that you're gonna, you have always, in every capacity you have served, from veterans to Capitol to Selectmen, uh, everything you've done over your years that I can remember. And I know you did a lot more before that. And I know that you always do it with, um, great dignity and, and respect to the town and the townspeople. So I'm, I'm happy that, to see your name here tonight for, in this, another new capacity.
Well, thank you. I think you've also found that just because you have the certification doesn't mean you always do the job.
No, I know.
Uh, so I'll hear a motion to appoint Lincoln as, um, Building Commissioner. Is it moved?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln.
Thank you. Look forward to working.
Thank you.
New hat.
Public forum? Correspondence. First on the list is, uh, CMRPC Cooperative Fuel Bill Results. We do have information from CMRPC, uh, on the rates that they've negotiated. And for fuel oil, it's one point six nine 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 dollars per gallon quote. And for diesel, it's a dollar seventy-two a gallon. And, uh, we're to vote if we wanna jump in on, on the CMRPC. It's competitive cost, and I just heard, just before it came to the meeting, that gas prices are going up. Gasoline prices are going up.
Well, I'd pay a lot more than that for diesel.
I paid two forty-nine yesterday.
Yeah, me too. So, I mean, that's a very nice price, so I, I'm in.
And, uh, and this is good for h- how long, Jennifer?
It's a, it's an annual. So we, we would enter into a contract with Peterson Oil. And, uh, we did that last year, and it proved to be a, a wise decision by this board. And because it's several communities, they're able to actually get that price. And more importantly, too, um, the actual boiler that's here in this new building was, uh, in large part, uh, the majority of it donated by, um, Peterson Oil. And not with any expectation, because this is a cooperative bid that has nothing to do with that. But I will tell you that what we needed, uh, to have someone step up to actually help us, um, during a crisis period, Mr. Peterson was there. And I do, uh, think that that was very admirable of him. And I also think that, uh, we've had a service contract with Peterson Oil for many years, and it's always been a, a really good thing. So I would, uh, recommend, uh, that if you, uh, direct me to, to sign the agreement for this year, we'll enter into that again.
So I make a motion to allow, um, Ms. Callie Hahn to sign the agreement for the cooperative bid for fuel and diesel.
Second?
Aye.
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 The next item, uh, on the correspondence list is, uh, Congressman Jim McGovern is holding a district-wide municipal, uh, listening on Wednesday, August sixteenth. And that will be from nine to eleven AM at the Sutton Town Hall, uh, for Uxbridge Road. Uh, this is basically addressed to, uh, to, uh, town officials and, uh, to gain firsthand knowledge of what's, what's going on at, at congressional level. And, uh, and he said, "Come prepared with, uh, your, uh, your questions and, uh, challenges." So that's, that's happening on, uh, August sixteenth, nine to eleven AM at the Sutton Town Hall at for Uxbridge Road. The next item is very interesting. It's a DS, D- DLS, uh... It's from the DLS, and it's, uh, regards their an- uh, annual seminar. And that'll, uh, happen on, uh, Thursday, September twenty-sixth.
Twenty-eighth.
Tw- I'm sorry, twenty-eighth.
And October fifth.
October fifth. Uh, the October fifth one is at the Log Cabin Banquet and Meeting House in Holyoke. And the, uh, Wednesday, uh, let's see, the other one is where?
September twenty-eighth.
Lantana in Randall.
And, uh, pre-registration is required, and, and it's due by the twentieth of September. I gotta tell you that I, I did go to the last one. It was, uh, Holy, College of the Holy Cross. And, uh, he, uh, these, these seminars are great. The, the first one's, uh, general in the morning session. It's, um, regarding legislation going on in the Commonwealth, and, uh, how to handle and deal with that. Uh, and then the, the afternoon, there are three separate seminars. This year's gonna be tax administration, territory management, and debt issuance. And the third one is, uh, special funds and financial procedures. And I think those kind of fall into the, the kinds of things we're trying to accomplish as a town in, uh, addressing policy and, uh, procedures going forward. So if you're interested, uh, the board is, if the board's interested in attending, remember you need to preregister by September twentieth.
I will be sharing that also with our Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee. I know that as a, um, um, committee, uh, they expressed interest, uh, this past spring. We had intentions of trying to, to make another DLS. And, uh, it just so happened that we had the special town meeting, uh, preparations that interfered with that because we needed to spend more time on, um, pa- hosting, uh, uh, hearings and the like. So I think that this might be a fitting one, but I will share that.
Thank you. Mr. Barber, you're a lucky man. You're the next guy up, again. And the, the subject is, uh, it's new business, uh, and it's building fee proposals.
So, this is the first time I've seen the typed copy. I don't know if you have both old and new. I'm sure you have this new one or what, but this is a redundancy, a mistake on the new one, um, in regards to garages. I spent a fair amount of time down here last week doing a variety of things. And one of the first was looking at the old fee schedule and saying it's very out of date and, and doesn't bear any resemblance with the estimated cost of construction or what things cost today. And that, um, a variety of things were actually losing propositions for the town. The town pays X amount of dollars for an inspection. A specific job requires three inspections, and the fee doesn't even cover two inspections. So, um, there are things on here that haven't been touched, some of them because I have no knowledge about them, like in-ground swimming pools and solar arrays. But the ones that jumped out and I have experience with, I made some changes or suggested changes, which I think we ought to adopt immediately, just so we're not running in the red on the Building Department, the fee schedule. Um, we're not supposed to be a profit organization, but we're supposed to be able to cover our expenses and hopefully stick a little bit of money away for upgrading software or, uh, sending somebody somewhere for a little education. So I think this is a start, and we needed to get something changed immediately. And that's what I'm suggesting here. The, the two garages, I would kick out the, um... The eighty-dollar one and go with fifty for now, and just, let's try and get a handle on what all these things cost. I spoke with a couple of local builders, and, and they're, without telling them what I'd recommended, their suggestions were more expensive than what I've got down here.
Is, is this schedule here, put before, is that-
The two-page one is the old one. The single-page one is the new one.
I only have one, right? Oh, let's see.
The new one has Building Department at the top. The old one has Board of Selectmen at the top.
Gotcha.
And there's some things that haven't been changed, and, and they probably will be when I've had a little bit more time. But then I went out and did an inspection, and I stepped back and said, "We're losing money right off the bat here."
I also, um, wanna, uh, show some indications of support for our, uh, new commissioner as a department head. Uh, one of the things that he's well aware of, uh, and our former commissioner has been, is that we have taken on a very serious tone with regards to enforcement. And oftentimes, when we have, uh, located someone who just decided not to take out a roofing permit, uh, you know, the worst that would happen to them would come down and, after they had been identified, either by our police chief, myself, or anybody else who noticed, and said, "Did they pull a permit?" Uh, and what we're finding is that even with, uh, a, a stepped-up enforcement, uh, that we're trying to achieve, all of that requires an awful lot of, uh, time and energy from our commissioner and, uh, other relevant parties. And I think that particularly with people who, uh, have known, uh, about not taking out a permit and the like, that, uh, I think some of this increase will also help, you know, provide the commissioner with, uh, the ability to have some resources also, uh, to be able to do the enforcement piece, which we know takes more time, more energy, more legal work, um, all of that. So I believe that our fee, uh, standards have been quite low, and I think it's about time that we change them.
In the first week, I've run into three separate institutions where people think it's okay to ignore the whole process, and there won't really be any repercussions for it, and, um, we need to change that.
So, so the plan here is that you're gonna, uh, come back to us with a recommendation?
I, I, I'm hoping the board is willing to adopt these changes initially, and then-
First four.
When there's been three or four months to get the information and, and, uh, fine-tune it, then I would come back with a second set, uh, addressing the things that haven't been addressed so far. But this, I, I really don't see the, the logic in operating at a known deficit waiting for, uh, a more comprehensive overhaul.
So may- maybe that, so that the board is clear, so e- everything on here, um, has been modified or taken from these other two pages? So, you know, it might say on what, on the, you know, former page, nine dollars per square foot for roofing and demolition, um, at a minimum of fifty dollars. Lincoln is recommending that be a hundred dollars. So on this one sheet, you have all the recommended changes. It's not all of them, like he said, if you were to look at all of the actual fees, but those were the ones that he has looked at and concretely is advocating for.
All right, so I was looking at new.
New construction.
In uppercase, as those were the new proposals, but it's actually throughout this list.
No, that's new construction.
That's, I know, I thought you meant new rates. So I'm glad I, I'm glad that was brought up.
Some of, um, it's just gonna take a little bit of thought as to-
So that was one of my questions.
What's the best way to do it so it's not punitive, but it covers expense? And certainly, you're not going to go out and measure a roof to figure out how large it is and try and come up with a fee based on square footage or something. And I can tell you from thirty-five years of experience that it's a common, um, practice to minimize the a- anticipated or estimated cost of construction to minimize the building permit fee, and also to minimize the assessed value of the finished project. Um, so the fees we had on here were just ridiculous in some instances.
So I assume that what you're recommending is at least, uh, equivalent to area, other area towns, the rates?
I think you'll find these are still less than most area towns. They're certainly not, I don't work around here, but they're, they're nowhere near what I'm used to seeing.
And some of these are not, uh, real egregious. They're, you know, for re-inspections, for instance, they, you know, were formerly at thirty-five. Lincoln's recommending they be at fifty. Um, if we look at sometimes the amount of time that our inspectors go out because someone has not conformed to code or what the expectation is, if he's going out three or four times, uh, again, that's-
You're losing money.
Right. And so I think, you know, you want people to take the fee structure seriously so that they'll do the work the right way the first time, uh, rather than, um, potentially having to keep coming out um, because it's, it, you know, it's so inexpensive.
I'd also like to see how the whole building process impacts the other, um, entities or boards or departments in town. I spoke with the assessor and, and had a brief discussion about how many times during the course of a new house does she send somebody out in the field to assess the completion to date? And that, and that ups the, the assessed value of it and changes the tax on it. And then on a new house, that can be four times. Somebody's paying for those four visits. It should be the, included in the, in the fee.
Okay, so my first question was, what was the old rates? And I was able to figure that out, so I have that. And you mentioned that I was busy figuring out the old rates. So I just want clarification that these are based upon other, other communities.
No, they're based upon what I think is a reasonable estimate of- Estimate, no, they're based upon what I think is a reasonable estimate of what it costs to build in the town of Millville.
And that would cover all of the inspections?
No, it has nothing to do with the inspections. It has to do with the cost of construction from start to finish. The way the fee's set up now is you figure out how much it costs and you divide that. Let's say the project costs a hundred thousand dollars. You divide it by thousands. So the multiplier, if you will, is a hundred. And then you multiply it a hundred times nine and the finished permit fee would be nine hundred dollars. So the idea is you have a realistic cost of construction and that's going to give you a fee based on, you know, what it costs. If you, if you take a house that costs a hundred and forty dollars a square foot to build and you're assessing that fee at seventy-five dollars a square foot to build, why? I changed some of them to a minimum just for the number of times you go out in the field.
Right.
Do you know when the, the building fees were last updated before this?
I've been told more than fifteen years ago, but no, I don't know.
Um, I wouldn't say that's true.
I don't know.
Never since I've been on the board. That's almost nine years.
Building fees? I know we've done electrical and plumbing.
Yep.
I thought we, I thought we did building at one point.
Only thing we did was the solar. I remember doing that.
I have never in thirty-five years seen anyone that could build a house at seventy-five dollars a square foot. That's, not in nineteen eighty you couldn't do that.
Well, I think one of the reasons we wanted a commissioner was to be recommendations because for those of us who might be in the trades and understanding of that, we know others are looking at it and have served the board for many years of, you know, are going back historically and trying to figure out that part of it. You know, I would say that to try to do this for the kinds of small incremental changes, I think it's wise. I do. I think it also sends the right message that we're trying to, to actually improve what it costs to do construction business in this town. And we have very little places to draw revenue from, even to support the building department. So I'm concerned about being able to do it.
I don't have a problem supporting this at all. My question is, is to support it and vote it in so that we have something. Is this something that you are going to then?
Sounds like there's a button there somewhere.
Yes.
I'm hoping.
You seem very reticent. I'm curious as to why.
I'm hoping that there's just some other follow-up to make sure that our numbers are like in line. You know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, you're in the field. I'm not. So I don't know.
I'm telling you, they're in line with Millville. I don't know what else you'd like to know. You want me to go to other towns and find out what their fee schedule is? We don't have the same infrastructure, overhead, cost of living. I don't know that our fee structure is comparable to theirs.
Well, when you say building a house, I'm thinking real estate values. So then I think, you know, those area, those towns around us are similar in that because real estate tends, like when you do an appraisal, they're getting one from your town, maybe the next town over of similar homes. So
Well, I'm not speaking to the finished cost. I'm speaking to the cost of construction. That's what statewide building fees are based on, the cost of construction.
My, and I'm only saying it because I don't want to go, this is what your opinion is and that's, I trust that.
Okay.
But
You think it's too high?
I don't know. I don't know. Is it too low?
So what is going to make you happy with?
I don't want to shortchange us either. I don't want to shortchange us. I just want to make sure that
That's why I, we're way below where we need to be. I'm telling you, this isn't the finished product. And there's some things on here that I don't have any experience with, so I didn't touch with them at all. But the obvious ones, like I got to make three inspections and the fee is fifty dollars. We've already lost money irregardless of what the finished cost of the project is.
Right.
We need to change that.
Yeah.
It's a summing lost business here.
Covering the cost of inspection service.
There, there is, in, in the training that I've gone through in the last few years, there's something that they mention over and over in the, in the building department is that there is a huge expense which has really nothing to do with this, but somehow this should help cover some of that expense. And that is all the zoning issues and the time you spend in court and the time you spend researching in order to get the court and actually make some progress. And that's part of running a building department and somehow the department needs to, it's not a profit business, but it shouldn't be a huge lost business.
You need to cover your costs.
We have to start somewhere. And this is just the start.
And how much money in books do we have to buy every three years?
Well, that's it. Right now, all the books that are in the building department belong to me because we don't have any books. At the end of this year, there's going to be a new set of books. They're not cheap, but we can get by with just state building code books when the code changes at the end of the year. I don't know whether they got lost in the move or where they are. I've asked and Christina thought there were some here, but right now Millville's books for the building department belong to me.
Just electrical books every three years, you spend it almost eight hundred bucks.
They haven't gone digital, huh?
They do. Just got to buy that.
No, you, it's
Got to be a member of the NFBA.
The stack of books is pretty big and you have to go through them to find what you're looking for. But that's, let's just stick to the topic at hand here.
So it looks like, give us a list of what you're recommending. It sounds like the board is agreeing with what you, which you're familiar with. But you want to look, go beyond that and maybe a part B to all of this is to update the whole fee schedule at some point.
I think the whole thing should be updated. I mean, I'm, everything I've done in Millville, I have always come to the board at some point and said, okay, I'm working for you. What is it you want this department or this, you know, entity to do? And then take guidance from that. So, you know, if you want to stay the way it is and be nice to the builders, that's, that's the guidance I'll take.
Well, you know, again, I want to remind the board too, with the amount of enforcement that we have been doing, it isn't cheap. It costs money to do that. Without the expertise of our commissioner, former commissioner and inspectors, we really don't have a leg to stand on and that takes time. And it's not just the building commissioner's expertise and time. It's legal counsel. It's all of that. So, you know, we're talking about something that over a period of time is not necessarily egregious even to the person pulling the permit, but it is a much bigger help to us. So I think the, the fact that it's, the list that you put together is fairly cogent based on what you directly know to be the experience that you have and that it's not, you know, relative to all of the fees. You, I think you've put together a pretty good argument. And to me, if I was somebody pulling a permit, I don't see anything on this list that makes me feel that, you know, people are going to complain about it at all.
I even reduced a couple. I reduced size.
Yeah, we're going to be voting on this tonight.
I hope so. And I eliminated one.
So I hear a motion to accept the recommended fee schedule for our new building commissioner.
With the one change that I noted as far as the garages were duplicated. So for now, we can go with the lesser of the two.
Second.
Row?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. That's my new name. B four one.
Anything? Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
No, thank you and good luck.
You'll see me around.
That's good.
Chief and I get to be good friends with. Can I ask a question while I am
Sure.
You had the floor. There are some issues here in town that have been hot and cold and hot and cold and I've seen them, seen them discussed at these meetings. I've been reading about them in the files. Is it the, the pleasure of the board to pursue these individual zoning problems that you have and proceed instead of tease them every once in a while and then pretend they don't exist anymore?
I think some of the items that we're not allowed to speak in open session, but this
They didn't bring up any specific things.
But this board has taken a stance that we need a strong enforcement to, for our zoning bylaws and for the neighbors that abut those properties that we're committed.
So my communication with the town administrator will be suffice to keep the board informed as to what's going on? Or do we want to have an executive session after review of all the files and come up with a plan for?
Well, we would, the ones that weren't an executive session, sure.
We have had some.
Yeah, but I'm not aware of what's, all I've done is look at some files, done some reading and honestly, most of the time said this, there's not enough information in here for me to really do anything moving forward except take what's here and start the process all over again.
But normally, once we have to get a lawyer involved, then it becomes
Expensive.
Expensive and then it ends up with some litigation and possibly, you know, if it gets to that point, then it's all executive session.
I think you might want to touch base to find out which ones are being pursued and which ones might need to be
Well, we've talked about it, but, you know, I've driven around, looked at a few things.
Yeah.
But it all takes time and then it's not a write a letter and wait six months. It's follow through and try and get a conclusion.
Yeah, no, if you give somebody
I'm just wanting to know, is there a commitment from this board?
Well, there is. If you give somebody a thirty-day window to clean up and they don't, then we want you, on day thirty-one, we want you to take step two. You know? So we're up, we're backing you on that for sure.
Alright.
No, we're going to be taking, oh, we started to take a more aggressive posture toward, to those
I'll be honest with you. I don't sit at home and watch the board of selectmen's meetings.
Why not?
So I don't know what's been done other than what I've read.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
And I don't know what you've discussed in executive session. I just know I'm looking at a file and there's, you know, eight, ten, twelve months between correspondence that this is not something that's been aggressively pursued. It doesn't give me the feeling there was an intent to come to a conclusion other than to appease somebody at the time because a complaint was made.
Yep.
I, I think being new in the position might warrant new letters to them and the stance that the selectmen stand behind enforcing our zoning bylaws and all building codes and all of those things.
I think it's going to be get up to speed on one, do that, and then start the next one.
But I think, I would say, I would say that it, it could be included in your letter that the board of selectmen support you in your endeavors or however that's worded to enforce and bring the town to code. You have, you have my full support.
Yeah.
And that has been the vote in the past. So if you want us to vote on that, we can.
No, I just
But it has been
It all takes time.
No, I know.
Alright.
Especially for a part-time position.
Thank you. I guess.
The next item agenda is a bike ride. September eighth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty through our town. The chief has been notified of that. We do this every year to approve this. So I'd be looking for a vote to grant permission for breaking aids ride through Millville.
Can I just ask the chief a question? Have they been in contact with you?
Yes.
Okay, because on their thing, it says, you know, Lincoln become, you know, summer becomes Lincoln, cross mending, cross the river. It says, welcome to Rhode Island. Are they flying over the bridge?
No, we see that. It's, they're well organized. We've never had a problem.
But do they know that the bridge is out in Rhode Island?
I don't know that.
Because it doesn't say turning down Providence Street.
I have no idea.
They'll figure it out.
They might figure it out that day.
They'd be like
No, because you are, right, they are, they are very organized.
Very organized, I would think they know that.
Because I would expect, I'm, I'm thinking North Smithfield's going to tell them.
Exactly.
But usually it, sometimes we've had every town listed in our packet. So you can see exactly where they're going. And this just says, welcome to Rhode Island. I'm like
They're very, they're very organized, very sold.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to grant permission for the breaking aids ride.
I make a motion to give permission for breaking aids ride to travel through our town on Friday, September eighth, two thousand seventeen, from approximately eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM.
Second.
Row?
Aye.
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 The next item is to name a board of selectmen member as an alternate for the CMR PC member, town member, the CMR PC.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have a duty as a community to look forward, a delegate and an alternate. And the delegate this year is yourself and that the alternate would and can be somebody other than somebody from the board of selectmen. And what I was going to say is they have to be a resident of the town. So if there's somebody that you're, if you're not inclined as a board and you want to come back to this by thinking about somebody else, that'd be one thing. But if you have a member in the board to be the alternate, that would be the most expedient way to do it.
Do I hear we have a member from the board? About a recommendation from the board, someone we might approach to be an alternate.
When I did it, there was somebody from the planning board.
Well, the planning board appoints the delegate and we appoint the alternate.
Right.
So they'll have the delegate from their board.
Yep.
So the alternate needs to come, either one of us or someone we
I had been the alternate in the past.
I did it for three years. It's not a bad thing, but it's just it just doesn't, it conflicts with my whole schedule.
And we do receive an awful lot of technical assistance. I've also entered into several grant contracts, contracts with CMR PC. They're working with us on our open space recreation plan, which actually is going to be another agenda item because we do need an actual board member for that as well. But for, I think that the amount of time invested in the alternate status is not, it's not overly burdensome. So, but it is usually very informative and it keeps us in the loop for anything new that might be coming down from the organization. These meetings occur during the day?
At night.
I think they're Thursday evenings.
Yeah, usually.
Usually at seven, starts at seven, you're out of there by eight-thirty unless it's some big presentation. They've got good coffee.
Good coffee.
Any food?
Sometimes they have some pretty decent muffins.
Because I know, and I think in the past, I think it's Thursdays because in the past I couldn't do it because I do my girls, um, Girl Scout troops on Thursdays.
Yep, we, we used to do it. I used, actually, my wife was the delegate, so we would make it late on.
Oh, it was date night.
Oh, there you go.
But now I am, other stuff on Thursdays, so. That was one excuse to
I think we should table this. That way we can figure out who we'd like to have as the alternate. That way we have some more time to maybe consider all our options. So.
I think that's reasonable. I can always put it on the next
They don't meet till the fourteenth anyways.
Next week, right?
Yeah, they're all Thursday evenings.
Oh.
Yep.
The planning board will meet next Monday.
What you could do also is, you know, submit by electronically. So if there's somebody that you come up with and if you don't want to approach him, I can try to approach him before we actually do it in the next meeting. Okay.
So to Andrew's recommendation, table that.
Should we make a motion? Should we make a motion, a vote?
Make the motion.
Okay, so I make a motion that we table this till our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Second.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, Mr. Cole.
Mr. Chairman, that particular agenda item is part of our old business, as you know. This board had actually directed me to send a letter, and that's also contained in your packet, back at their June fifth meeting, that we would actually remove ourselves from a former intermunicipal agreement for accounting services. I did actually post a position for a hi, to actually hire somebody to be both a accountant slash finance director. At the time that I had put that out there, we had let it sit since that, I'm gonna say second week of June. And I had not received any applicants. I know that before I came, when we were looking for a town accountant, we had two potential people.
Last go around?
Last time, yeah.
One.
Oh, and one, okay. So I didn't feel bad when it didn't happen. But one of the things I recognized is that we, you know, I was inclined to think about it in terms of looking at potentially getting a financial service agreement contractually with someone. And I did put out requests for that. Unfortunately, our town is quite small and there's a lot of firms that aren't necessarily hugely interested in us. They, when they said that they weren't willing to actually put forward any kind of quote, I then would ask, could they make any suggestions? The one that actually did come back was Bay State Municipal Accounting Group, and that is the agreement that's before you. The person who's before you also is somebody that we're familiar with. And what I would recommend to this board is within this, we, we knew going into our budget year that we have been probably woefully not budgeting accounting and financial services the way we need to in this town. And ever since losing Marilyn, you know, for all her years of service, it's been a pretty daunting struggle to get somebody qualified to address things that have been pointed out to this community through the board's direction, finding out that we needed to improve and try to right our financial ship. We did that through this intermunicipal agreement. It was meant to stabilize us. But now we have, I think, an opportunity to take the next step, which is to really embrace financial management practices, to work with our treasurer collectors. Just because we were able to put some, I call it countermeasures in place to prevent our town from slipping further in the wrong direction, we've been able to, I think, do an awful lot this year. So the agreement before you is one that looks, instead of hiring an individual, hiring an actual firm for financial management services. And within that scope, it would include both our responsibilities as a community to have accounting measures in place on a daily basis and also for reporting. And also it includes financial directing and strategic planning, which is something that we know that we've been able to benefit from as well. So some of the faces you'll remember, including the one in front of you, and some may be different, but they will be based on what our needs are and for our community. So I would strongly recommend that we actually go into this agreement, for one, because we're starting this year off at the right foot, and two, because in all honesty, we need to do something and I don't want to get behind and not move forward. And so I think I can all speak for this whole board that we're familiar with Justin Cole, but maybe you want to speak a little bit about Bay State Municipal Accounting Group and how it might actually really benefit our community.
Sure. So the firm has been around since two thousand nine. It's made up of six employees right now, all municipal employees that work at the firm. Everybody has between ten and fifteen years of experience, with the exception of the newest person who's on staff, who only has two years of experience. You know, I got into this business because there, there are a lack of municipal accountants. I mean, the, the experience that you folks have had and their hiring process is, is no different than what literally half the state goes through. Municipal accounting is not a attractive career path for, you know, people who are getting out of college or people who are looking to establish a career. It's not particularly known for being well-paying. It's not a, it's not a fancy job you can tell your friends about, that anybody really understands. And it doesn't, you know, necessarily produce anything, you know, tangible, you know, it's not the highway department. It's not inspectional services, you know, it's not something that people can see and put their hands on and interact with, you know. It's, it's financial reporting, it's financial management. So as a firm, we provide all kinds of financial services. So it's not necessarily just accounting. We're town accountant, town treasurer, town collector, assessor. You know, if it falls into the municipal finance realm, you know, we have people that do all of those jobs, so. You know, I think we would be well positioned to help you guys out in what is the next phase of your financial cycle, you know, looking toward, you know, the challenges you have on the horizon and coming up with a game plan for those challenges and doing it a way that you and the department heads are already familiar with.
Along with this agreement, you'll be, you, you, your firm will be onsite, have onsite accessibility?
Correct. So it's for two days a week onsite. So you get forty hours a week of service out of it, two days a week onsite. Unlimited phone, email, office support. You know, the, the main phone line is open from seven in the morning until six at night, so anything that comes up, you'll have a dedicated person who will be your account rep. And, you know, will attend, you know, both your meetings and the finance committee meetings, you know, as needed, as well as obviously your town meetings and, you know, all the important meetings relative to the budget, you know, running up the town meeting.
Is Legal?
I had sent it, but I hadn't heard back because Barbara was off a couple of days. But I, I don't think there will be anything in it, but I can do that again to verify if there is anything. They'll, they make the suggested changes, but because it's a service contract, it's based on, I think, what the, the firm would like to see. But I did send it to them. I just didn't get it back in time.
Okay. And so the software that is associated with all of that is yours?
So you're gonna stay, you're gonna stay on the platform that you're already on?
Okay.
So there's no changes to any of that? There's no changes to any of the software license agreements that you already have in place?
Okay.
How many clients does your firm have currently?
Eight.
And those are towns, correct?
Cities and towns.
Cities and towns.
So contingent and feedback from Legal?
Sure. I would just ask if, if I received the green light from Legal that the board allow, as the chief of chairman and officer, for me to be able to enter into the agreement. And I can send you any of the recommendations that Legal counsel makes.
Motion? So move.
Second?
Me.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you guys.
Look forward to working with you too.
Again.
Under old business, our grant committees vote to appoint a board member to serve our master plan review committee and open space recreation plan.
Yes, you see a, a very brief email correspondence I've cast. The town planner who rightfully should be kind of heading up some of these initiatives, even though I may have originally been the one to apply for either one of these grants, but the town planner is the best and most adequately suited for trying to pull together both a representative from this board as well as many other boards for, one, to review the master plan. We have a lot of our master plan that's been done, but we're working and we've contracted with CMR PC to try to finalize that. That might be a lot less time-consuming and intensive because some work has been done, although I did hear from CMR PC that there was an indication from them that they thought actually more had been done on that. And there are some sections that are woefully still inadequate. But that in and of itself, it is meant to be a higher level review. So it's the public input and the lengthy kinds of meetings you do for outreach won't be as intensive. So that will be much more about a member from the zoning board, a member from the Board of Selectmen, town administrator.
So that's what I was gonna ask, on the master plan, what, would, who, do you know off the top of your head who's represented? I don't, I can't off the top of my head.
Well, this one that they're actually asking for, we have a, a community member who actually came to the town hall and was very excited about everything that we've been doing and had referred herself to me that she would be willing to serve especially on either a master plan or open space recreation plan. But usually it would be somebody from, in this particular case, I think she has somebody from zoning. We have a member from the planning board, a member from the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator. It could also be, I'm trying to think, conservation. So there's a number of them, but it's not too big. I want to say there's like nine or something like that. And then the open space recreation plan is something completely different. That is to actually put together a plan. We do not have one. That will be, you know, a year-long effort that will do the initial public outreach. And, you know, I've put together a suggested list for different types of people, from parks and recreation, conservation, zoning, you know, a number of things, you know, people who are interested in gardening in town, all of those kinds of people to serve on this open space recreation committee. But we still would need one member from this board. And so I'll be involved in both of those committees as well, but that is the request coming from CMR PC. And also it, it actually helps you finalize the document in the eyes of a state too, because the particular grant program that we got funding to do this open space recreation plan, they do look for direct input from their chief executive board, and that would be you.
With that being said, I know that this board has, has asked, Tom and Andrew might not be aware, but we had continuously asked for the master plan because it's really contingent on a lot of things. And I, I know there was, you know, work being done. I actually just came across a copy, the last draft this weekend while I was cleaning out my file. And so I know how important it is with the, the grants. And I think having one of us on that, on either one of those committees allows almost a liaison back to this board as to the progress and to the work that they're being done. So I can do either one. I have no preference, one over the other. I just need to make sure that whatever night is selected is something that will fit into, to my, my schedule and my family's schedule. But I, I can make myself available for either one if someone else has a preference.
Okay. The, the master planning one is from our shared planning grant. So that is to, we purposely picked and selected that along with doing a zoning diagnostic portion of it. And the open space recreation plan is from the small rural communities grant that we had received. So because either one of those are gonna require actually fielding the input from any of the people who we have selected to make sure that we come up with the best, I mean, obviously, nobody wants to meet when people can't meet, so. But I, I appreciate that. I think, you know, it's your choice on which one you'd like to be part of. Vice chairman, I don't know.
I don't have a preference. If someone else on the committee wants to step up because they have a preference in one of the committees over the other, if not, you can flip a coin and throw me on wherever I'm needed.
Do we have another volunteer?
I'm actually thinking about the first one. We were talking about the quarterly meetings.
Oh, okay.
For the CMR PC.
Okay.
So I was gonna send everybody an email on that one, those quarterly meetings.
Andrew, any interest? So I'll take the other one.
Do you have a preference, Joe?
I think you'd be good on the master plan. You voiced a lot of concern.
Oh, I'm not good on the master plan.
No, 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 that's not what it meant. I just know that he's asked me an awful lot about, you know, the status of it. And when we kind of found out that it really wasn't complete, it, it, we needed more funding to do that. So that's why I did the other grant to try to get that to happen, so I think that would be good. And, and I think your work, especially Jennifer, on all of the community days and activities related to different events in town, I think you'd be a perfect person for the open space recreation plan.
You have to do something. You're not on the centennial.
I know. And that's my problem. I have an open night now and I-
You just tell me what night that is and we'll make sure that we probably put the meeting on that night.
So that's fine.
All right, so.
So do we need a motion on that for Joe for the master plan review committee and for myself on the open space recreation? Maybe someone else could do that other than Joe and I?
Vote for both?
Yeah.
Yeah, one for the master plan would be Joe.
Joe for the master plan committee and Jennifer for the open space rec, recs committee.
Okay.
Second.
I'm rule? Aye.
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 Wait, do you guys get paid for that?
And that's what I just said, we don't get paid.
No, that doesn't, all right, so. I don't know if in your selectman form you want to go back to the, the CMR PC delegate or do you really want to wait till the twenty-first? Because there's the first meeting on the delegate one was-
September fourteenth.
Oh, September fourteenth. That's what they wanted it by August. Okay, sorry. It's up to you.
Either way.
Well, we can do that.
Just do it during the forum.
Tom, if you're a definite, we can go back now. Otherwise, we'll wait till next.
I think the-
Yeah, no, I can, that shouldn't be a problem for me, so. I was just gonna send an email to all of you and Jennifer.
Okay. We had an actual vote to table it, so we'd have to make a motion to-
Yeah, rescind that.
Rescind.
Re- re- reconsider.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vote.
Actually, Andrew-
Actually, Andrew made the-
Andrew would have to-
So you'll have to rescind it.
If we were to appoint Tom, because you made the motion, you would actually have to rescind the tabling of it.
So, any sort of?
I'll second the rescind.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tom, who was the alternate delegate for the CMR PC, central master planner.
A second?
Rule?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Good.
Thank you, guys. That's great.
Now for all the good news.
Yeah, the good news. As we go through as a town administrator update, our town hall update. I still think that we'll be giving some hints of updates even into our next couple of meetings because we are still completing things here at our new town hall. I know that we don't have a luxurious desk here yet, but it was so exciting to actually move in on July thirteenth. It's been quite a while since we had our last meeting and so there's an awful lot that's taken place. I will tell you that we still have things to do. Obviously, Rome wasn't built in a day and this town hall certainly has taken its time to actually come to fruition. As you can see, when you came in, there's a, a great amount of organization that's already taken place with the move of departments. And I'm just so excited to share this with the rest of the community. Anybody who has come up here, we have heard nothing but wonderful, positive feedback and that is really great. It's great to hear that the- and that is really great. It's great to hear that the effort from the students from Blackstone Valley Tech, our project coordinator and assistant project coordinator, myself, the chief, everybody's been involved. Everybody has stepped up to the plate and it's, and it really truly is a great work environment. And when it's really complete with, with our artifacts on the walls and everything in place, it's gonna be wonderful. So our, you've already mentioned, we're going to have our actual open house. It should be fun. I heard that the chief's gonna be cooking hamburgers. He just doesn't know it yet. But he's been really super. Again, I have to give the chief an awful lot of credit because during the move and since the move, when there are things that we weren't necessarily thinking of or we hadn't gotten to yet, because it was, the most important was to get the staff to move here. But, you know, everything from putting up a posting board to, you know, putting in an AED or making sure that we had other things that the Valley Tech couldn't get to because the students were already gone, there are just some things that still needed to be done and we're still doing them. So, you know, everything that we're gonna be focused on now relates to interacting with the public and communicating. So there will be signs that will be going up. We're gonna have keyless entry into this building. Our protein, propane tags are gonna be coming for our new generator and, you know, other things like the quilt and other things that we're gonna try to get up and find the best place for it. And for the most part, the major departments are settling in and we're really reducing our footprint as much as possible because we just don't have the same kind of luxury of space that we had in the other building. So stay tuned. There'll be more to come and when I tell you that it's been quite exciting for the staff, it has been and everybody, including our cable guy, he now has his own area in the back there. Hi, Tim. So I was gonna say, if we move on to the next item is waste disposal fee increase. Nothing really huge about this, but I wanted to share with you. The wheel abrader has gone up with their waste annual disposal rate from $66 up to 66.87. I just say that because I know trash has been an important topic on, especially on millble matters and some other things, which is something I think in the future we might take an opportunity to place as an agenda item depending on how things continue to go with overall disposal issues. And I know our border health secretary has been wonderful in trying to address those, but there might be some things that we can collectively put towards the border health and also the company, Republic, to try to address going forward. The IT update. In your packets, you're gonna see a rather large document about e-permitting from PermitPro. Our commissioner, since left, actually was great to come in and sit in on this. We actually had contracted with PermitPro. I entered actually into some service agreements, actually six different ones, related to our IT grant, which we had to expend before June 30th. So in addition to moving and everything, we had done a lot of in advance demos for e-permitting. This is gonna be phenomenal for our town. It really is. Even the commissioner, who would be probably the first one to say that he doesn't have lots of experience in the IT area, even saw the initial sandbox module that PermitPro has created for the town based on things that have worked really successfully for other communities. I don't expect you to understand all of that, but I did ask Angelina, who is our person who is working directly with our town, to take all of our forms and, and also our actual permits. And we're gonna be having online permitting and it will be something that will be phenomenal, I think, for people who, when we talk about people who don't come and get a permit because it's not convenient or they can't make it here and hope that the commissioner and nobody goes and checks, that this will be something I think that will offer a lot of convenience for people. So we're in the, not even the beginning phases. We've already, like I said, created a sandbox module. Our next responsibility for building department, that's the first module, that we go out, contracted to have our border health module also to be made and then also a tur, a town clerk. Anything that has, a department that is seeking to collect things, seeking to have people applying, you know, through the board to actually get permission to do something, all of those will be eventually included in this.
This will be linked through our website.
It will be linked through our website, yep. So our next phase is, is to actually go in and play with the actual module that they're putting together and to look at specific tasks, but what they even, they've already constructed it based on our information that has been provided through our assessing department and also the information that was already started from our building department. So we'll be having another actual meeting with them and eventually I asked them if they could even come and do an actual demonstration here. So we'll have them do that. I only highlighted them at the beginning because, like I said, you know, one of the things that I committed to do when I took this job is to try to bring in revenue to the town. And I think this is not just modernizing us, but it's also a way of trying to systematically collect revenues for this town and make sure that we don't have people slip through the cracks.
Really, the genesis of this really initiated with the Community Compact.
Yes, yes. And it was a substantial grant of about 57,000. What we also have done is contracted, we did VEDAR systems for our accounting this past year and now going forward, we're doing the whole treasurer sign for accounts payable. So that's a whole software that will now allow for direct payment, not direct payment, but source payment. And so it also allows a better tracking system and communication with our other VEDAR systems. So, so those in and of itself will be worked on. I know our new accounting slash finance firm is gonna work very closely with our treasurer, particularly in rolling this out, as well as the firm from VEDAR will do that as well. And I know that Lisa, as our treasurer, is excited to be able to be part of that. We're also gonna actually come into the 20th century for payroll. We're still doing things really by hand. So Harper's payroll is one we've contracted with that will also, that is gonna be a technological advance for us and they have a lot of experience being able to do that. And hopefully that frees my collector up to be able to do other things that we never get to, which is really, you know, continue to go after people for non-payment of taxes, but more importantly, look at coordinating the efforts that we've already started with our treasurer and also those, you know, things that we don't get to because we don't have the resources or the person is so bogged down in just doing the weekly payroll. So that will help as well. Another piece of it, we did the GIS. I know the chairman sat in on that demo. That will help our assessor's office, but not just the assessor's office. That was a demo that I know even the public safety had been part of. So we've contracted with them in terms of the software. And a lot of these are multiple year agreements or they're substantial enough to, most of the expense related to these kinds of technology agreements are the upfront costs. And then it's the maintenance costs, which are much less and more affordable for a community like ours. But we wouldn't be able to do all of this had we not had the one grant. And all of it was also meant to help us with not just accounting features, but I think anything that relates to communicating, you know, between one department to another when it relates to the overall finances of the community. So, so that's important. But there is another aspect of it. We did have to do some technological upgrade because a lot of this software depends on the computer hardware that can sustain it and keep it moving. So there has been also an investment that coincides with the software that we made before we came over here with upgrading all the departments with new hard drives, which will actually hold that. And that would have been something that we would not have been able to do. So that was a big piece of it. It was, after we did all the agreements, we still had some left over. And the final piece of our technology grant is that we're gonna be getting a new town website. And we already started the preliminary discussions and we're gonna be working closely with virtual town and schools and, you know, when we get to the phase where we can start to share some information, I would like to do that and also make a recommendation, since we've only had one preliminary meeting so far, let's have somebody from this board actually attend the next demonstration. They're supposed to actually be working concurrently right now with some of the things, images and the town clerk was part of that process, our board of health, a number of people who are interested in them using the town website and use it regularly. And we wanna make it much more user-friendly. The other thing about our town website that was something that I don't think many of us thought about was because of the readability issue, that we really, in this day and age, actually, they're making requirements that towns make things readable for those people who are visually impaired. And actually, our website would, would not conform to that because it's very hard readability wise. So, so I think there'll be some things, but if there's somebody on the board that would like to come, I will put out a word when we're gonna have our next meeting and if one of you would like to come, I think you'd find it interesting and it might be something where, especially if you use our website a lot or thought something needed to be improved, it'd be good to hear that, you know, so. So that's that for the IT update. A lot that's going on and we're just starting to roll out.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
The IT to go back.
Sure.
The Pro, the licensing?
PermitPro, yes.
That's through Patriots, who's currently.
Yes.
Our assessor for our properties. Okay, because it makes sense.
It does, yep.
And then I was gonna ask, so some individuals don't like to use the computer. They don't like to pay online. They don't like to do those things. So if they were to walk into our office, would they be shown a computer? Would the staff be doing it for them on the computer? How will that work for our individuals?
Well, this is, this is something that we actually did in our last demonstration. We talked about how other communities have worked that because some communities, it's absolutely, you have to do it online. There is no, you know, concessions that they make. And especially for large communities, that's what they're doing. But one of the things that our representative had talked about, about is maybe even creating a station where.
Well, they talked about that. What, Mendon has like a, like a kiosk escape station. You go in and you fill it all out.
Yeah, the big thing about this is you don't wanna get into having dual systems. One, you know, that's not tied to the other because what will happen is it starts to skew your ability to keep track of things and also allow interdepartmental communication. The thing about, that Lincoln was talking about earlier as a commissioner and the sign-off approvals for building kinds of things, you know, you can go back and look at our records and some permits are just given out because certain people were not able to come in or they were not, enough effort was given to, within a 30-day period of time to actually execute it. They, you know, the clock starts ticking, you know. So this in and of itself will allow direct communication and ability for each person who has authority or needs an approval to sign off on, that they will be able to use this. It really is. It's, it's an amazing tool and it's gonna take time to, to get to know it. But for the community, we may be able to offer that. But I still would say that once we start to roll it out, we can even help assist people to do that because it may take time. But they say most places that have this, and there's small communities and big communities that have PermitPro, they really, once, once builders and, and those people who are in the trades or somebody who needs a food permit or whatever, they love it. Once they know what to expect, it's no different than coming in and doing a form.
Okay.
And then they can actually get, once the inspector does something, they can actually print off their, their, they don't even have to come down and get it, you know. So there's a lot of things that I think will work well. But that's a, a good observation. We, we talked about that and I think we could make a, as you know, in our new town hall, we do have some area where, you know, we've made it so that residents can come in and actually sit and complete paperwork or things like that. So I think we'll make a place, especially once we go online, so that people can do that and, you know, we can assist them in that. The other thing is, I wanted to just let you know, I did submit, I don't know how we pulled this off, but we did submit because it was right in the middle of the move. I, I think I told you that when we got the small rural community grant for both the appraisal and the open space recreation plan, one of the conditions was, was that we also have to apply for a park grant. It just happened that the park grant was really the day before actually our move. So when I say that it wasn't an easy thing to do, I mean, the chairman will tell you, writing some of these grants and pulling together the documents is not easy and I don't even know how I did it in the.
Eighty pages here.
Yeah, I was still in the, the police station jail cell and, but anyway, it's, it's a good grant. You know, every time I turn around, I know that we've got something in there, some substantial things in there. I'm not gonna go into all of that this evening. Suffice it to say, it really is targeting towards trying to develop a recreation in a park area in town that was gonna be linked to the centennial. So there's a lot of detail. We don't have the grant yet, but I had to put together the documents and the appraisal. So I'll be sharing that with you on another time, but I wanted to let you know, we did get it in. If we're not successful this time around, all, all the, because one of the things you're supposed to have is a draft of your open space recreation plan on file. We don't have the draft. I did my best with our central mass regional planning to put together the outline and in some ways, I think that might be the one thing that, that holds us up. But it's, in, in general, all the pieces are there, so they'll have more than one cycle for funding and, you know, we'll try to go for that later. But anyway, it's, that part of it's done. The next article that I put on the agenda, it relates to the mud hub. And I only put it on because I'm starting to have to think about what we're gonna do with that. You know that we applied for a demolition grant. I hear that the, they forwarded the actual nominations for those people who will be recipients to the attorney general's office who oversees that grant program. I'm still hopeful that we'll get something, but in the meantime, regardless of whether we get something or not, we should start to take action. I've talked to the chief about how deplorable that building is. He's talked to me about that. It will take time regardless of whether we get that grant or not. And I, you know, shared that, the documentation for the demolition grant and what that would entail. The big thing is being able to take possession of the property. And most of the time, if you start looking at foreclosures or tax title takings, even when you know the people, it can take time. And if you don't do it and you turn around and have somebody else do it, most of the time, they want, they wanna stake in it and they wanna profit from it. We're not really interested in that. I think we're interested in trying to control the destiny of that property and, and have it, you know, return to being a property that will have an opportunity for you guys to entertain some proposals for. In order to do that, looking at, do we wait a long period of time to try to go down the, you know, the, the tax title taking and foreclosure route? Or can we do something in which we can try to negotiate what they call a deed in lieu of foreclosure? That basically means that we would try to negotiate with the current owners and see if they might be interested because there are substantial taxes that have not been paid relative to this property and to forego that and maybe actually allow the town to take possession of the property in terms of a deed, I think makes more sense. I think we have the ability to negotiate. I'm asking this board to at least allow myself and some member of the board to think about approaching them and to start that process and see where we come. If they say they're interested in trying to do that, then, you know, that would be the quickest route. Then we'd need town meeting approval and maybe by that time, we both know that we have a grant in hand and even if we don't, we know we gotta do something, we can start that process, especially since Central Street Mass Works Program grant is gonna, a construction grant is gonna be starting in the fall and be completed in the spring. I wanna be able to have this on the docket and ready to go, but it's gonna take some time. So I'm just asking for the board to consider that route. If we come up empty, then we'll have to just go the traditional route, which might take a little bit longer. And, you know, obviously I would try to work hard to try to expedite that. But I think, at this point, I think deed in lieu of foreclosure makes the most sense. And if I can get direction from the board and have a board member, you know, potentially be in on those negotiations, that would be good and we can come back to the board and see what we get.
Has anyone tried to recently talk with the?
No, a part of it is, you know, they have post boxes and the last discussions that were with our treasurer was that they were not interested in the property, but we weren't interested in taking it because we didn't have, that was before me coming here, but we didn't have a plan and you needed money and more importantly, the liability without being able to take it down. So now we know proximally what it might cost. We've got some indications as I put together the demo.
I, I would support that in terms of the structure is, is now, it's hazardous. And if, God forbid, if there were a fire there. And if there, God forbid, if there were fire there. So, I would, I would support the idea of deed in lieu of foreclosure.
And in the end, it comes back to this board, it comes back to town meeting?
It would come back to the board initially and then town meeting. So that's why I'm thinking, fall town meeting would be coming up and-
Then I say that we pursue the avenues that are before us, possibilities. And if it doesn't work for, in our favor, then we abandon it. And if it does, we continue to pursue it. I mean, why not? I don't mind sitting in on that one.
Alright, that would be great. Alright, so we'll have, I'll work with Jen on that, and we'll get back. It'll be the tag team, the Jen and Jen negotiating team.
Jen squared.
Jen squared, thank you. And, you know, I'm hoping it will be fruitful. And then the last item is the out-of-district student transportation. I know the last time we brought this up, and we've been looking at it from our finance committee perspective, it's always late in the fiscal year and then going into the first fiscal year that we finally get numbers. Actually, it was today even, I finally got the answer from Tri-County that actually, even though they had two more students that they had offered acceptance to, but then it was up to the students whether they would come in as new students, yeah, freshmen. So, out of the two, there's only one. And if you read the email that came from Valley Transportation through Bill Legere, you'll see that even if we had one, we would be up to the eight between the five from Norfolk County and then also the two that already existed at Tri-County along with the one. Having said that, that means that we'll be needing two vehicles. I am, because this just came in this morning after I had reached out to Tri-County, I thought it was odd, because I still hadn't heard, they had just made that decision last week and the only one student had responded to say that they wanted to come in for the freshman status. So, having said that, it'll need some increase. And we also still have a student that has been accepted to Keefe Tech. And unfortunately, Valley Transportation, we would be able to put them in the second vehicle, but the times don't correspond. So, that's the next piece that I have to work on and be working on it with, I'll be reaching out to our counterpart in Blackstone, because apparently there's somebody else that's going to school there. So having said that, that would conclude the town administrator update. And your next meeting will be August 21st, and we do have signatures this evening. Last time, we had an executive session and unfortunately, I, I didn't stop everybody to get their signature for the control warrant and also hundred minutes for this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I make a motion to adjourn? Oh, after we, yeah, that's right, after we sign, starting, it'll- Exciting.
So, I think it's very exciting that the 16th is fast approaching. We have a bunch of Centennial t-shirts that we've located inside.
Well, they're in-
They were in the town hall. No, we brought them because we didn't want them to get-
Because our committee voted on-
What to do with them?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because right now I have quite a few biocameras full of them, so we were thinking-
Boxes.
So, good, we'll talk about this afterward.
Yeah, we'll touch base. Take a motion to adjourn meeting?
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, she, I have a question.